The first thing we get to hear for our magnificent legislative update from Deborah Bryant.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Hope everyone's doing well today. Well, happy crossover. We're finally there. This is the halfway point and today the legislators have been on the floor since early this morning. They're still on and as last night, they probably will go into the night. So it'll be an interesting day. I've tried to prepare some things for you, but just a caveat, everything can change today. Well, not everything, but some things are still unsettled. So with that, first slide, please. Okay, second slide, please. There we go. Okay, here's what's coming next. So as I mentioned, today is crossover. So by midnight tonight, the House has to pass all of their bills that'll be coming out and the Senate has to pass all of theirs. Then after that, we'll be starting on the money committees. We'll be working on their budgets. So you can see that there, there's a few deadlines that the money committees will be responsible for the budget. Then on March 2nd, that will be another deadline where the chamber will have to complete work on each other's budget, then also appointing the conferees. So if there are different versions in the House and different versions in the Senate that were passed, then the conferees will be appointed and they will battle it out and then let us know what they decide. March 7th, the deadline for committee action, and then March 12th, we will be adjourning. And then to come back on April 27th, to see what the governor has done with what has been passed. Next slide, please. Okay, this list was much larger early this morning and as I'm trying to multitask, everything that has been approved on either the House or Senate floor, I've moved over. So we do have a couple that are still, these three were just engrossed yesterday. The STR bill, as I mentioned last week, really doesn't affect us and there have been no changes to it that would affect us. It seems though, it just from the committee discussions that I sat in the other day, there is some confusion as to what this bill really does and doesn't do. And really, for our purposes, since we already have an adopted ordinance, it does nothing. But for those other jurisdictions who don't have an adopted ordinance on STRs unless they formally adopt one, they will not be able to to regulate them, except for whatever is already in code. So it's a very confusing one, but the bottom line is, it doesn't really affect us at any point right now. The second one that the food donations, it passed in subcommittee and full committee. There's the only reason it hasn't gone through the floor yet, although it's a wonderful idea. It's one of those that Mrs. Henley had brought to our attention that the, some of the students in Virginia Beach were putting forward. The Department of Health in Virginia is really just making sure that it doesn't do anything that would run afoul of their health regulations. So I think that one should go through fine as well, once they do their tweaks. The gas tax, I've talked to you, that one just got engrossed yesterday and that's the House version. I'll talk to you a little bit more about the taxes when when we get to that that point. So next, please. Okay, the bills that are definitely crossing over to the other side, House Bill 444, which is FOIA, which will allow virtual meetings of boards and commissions, that one passed the House. The Senate bill failed on the floor. So this one is going to be, it went all the way through full committee and then once it got to the floor, it failed. So this will be an interesting one to watch, just to see what the House will do with the this version, since they failed the version that they had. The next bill, 518, head is the accommodations intermediary that I spoke about last week, that our commissioners of revenue have are happy with with this way this one turned out. There was not a Senate companion. So that's why that one is the way it is. You'll see that the House Bill 1163 and Senate Bill 274 that were specifically for the City of Virginia Beach, which was our Board of Equalization, they both went, they went through both chambers, a full, full vote. So there was consensus on that. And so we will definitely get our charter amendment. The next two as well, that was the VMCI grant for Virginia Military Communities Grant. And I explained that that was similar to the the federal one, the DCIP, which for us is a good thing because we do have military properties around. And this would not be to fund anything on the military property. It would be for the city to be able to fund things to assist the military property. The reason I think that this passed so overwhelmingly is because there was a caveat in committee that one of the delegates said, well, we can approve this grant, but that doesn't mean we have to fund it. So there is a funding mechanism right now in the budget for $10 million, but it was kind of intimated in the commit committee that they may not fund all $10 million. So we'll see where that goes. The next, the grocery tax, Senate Bill 451, there actually was also another, a companion bill in in the House. These are going to undergo changes. The Boyce Co. grocery tax would keep the 1% local option and then codify the school payment of the 1% from the general fund. The .5 or the 5 cent, you know, point, half a penny, actually, would go away. That's the one that's transportation under this one. And we'll talk a little bit more about the tax ones later on. As far as the House version of this, that also passed, that would not keep the 1% local option. So it's assumed that those two are going to go to conference and it will be battled out there. Senate Bill 537, the Marston Bill for the Development in the Trees, that one I did pass, but not by an overwhelming margin of 2415. It did not pass in the House. And I know Mrs. Henley was concerned about that one. And also, the Green Ribbon Committee had wanted it. So I'll tell you about that one when we get to the other one that failed and what the problem is with that one. The same-sex marriage bills are meeting what we thought. The Senate bill passed 2514. The House is not passed, but they're all kind of lagging. And it seems like instead of making decisions, there will be some tabling that goes on with those. The eminent domain bills that I know our city attorneys are very concerned about, and so are a lot of other localities, both of those passed the Senate. And we are working, still continue to work with them on ways to make them more palatable to localities. So we won't have to have so many difficulties when we try to do road projects. I continue to work with our city attorney and also VML and VACO on those. Our best bet for those is, because there were no House companions, to get them fixed in the House. The best thing would be for them to die in the House, but we will see what happens with those. And then the last bill that is definitely crossing over is House Bill 1088. That's the one that re-talks about subdivisions and our planning director had some issues with that one. And we're working that one through. He's not the only one. A lot of planning directors had some issues on how subdivision is defined in that bill. Okay, next, please. Okay, the bills that are not moving forward, several of these, you know, where they died last week, which was the Law Library Bill to try to get the from $4 to $7. The House Bill 978, the Durant Bill, which was the ERT bill where there was going to be a reallocation of the recordation tax. Both of those bills failed in the Senate and this bill in the House, because there was no action taken, it fails. And so those bills are all essentially dead. So our original worry about where we were going to get that $20 million from is now not an issue. You know, the next issue broadband that was laid on the table, based on the fact that it's going to be taken up in the budget bill, which is actually a more appropriate place for it to be taken up, and we're working on that. The bill that concerned, I call it the RAC bill, that, you know, that one was also laid on the table. And there are several people in other jurisdictions who are also looking at that, but it may come back next year. Our FOIA bill for the Department of Housing Neighborhood Preservation, the one that would allow them to give, not have to give out names of who tells on a neighbor that has a, an issue such as, you know, garbage or trash, that was laid gently on the table. So what that means, and I know I've gotten some inquiries about that, is it's it's also been sent to the FOIA Council to study. And so that's probably, that's better than killing it. And so they're going to figure out a way to what the FOIA Council believes would be the best way to handle that. So we'll, we'll hear about that. The Inclusionary Housing Bill was carried over to next year. In Senate Bill 214, we were talking about the virtual meeting bills, and that was passed all the way to the floor and then that one died. So they do have the same companion bill in the House that they'll have to look at. So we'll see what will happen about that. House Bill 1346 is the companion bill for the tree canopies. That one was laid on the table in the House and, as I mentioned, passed in the Senate. The issue with that one was the opposition was the the developers, some, several of the commercial developers were in opposition to it because they thought that the localities would put too many restrictions on commercial developers and make them plant trees where it wasn't really warranted or do some sort of mitigation when they cut down trees. Of course, that is the whole point of having the bill, but they didn't want it to be that draconian that they had to do things. So the good news is it's half still alive. And so the version that came out of the Senate, hopefully, will be able to do something when it, when it crosses over. Senator, Delegate Davis' bill that had to do with the school board elections has been stricken. The Senate Bill, Peaks Gas Tax Bill was passed by indefinitely, but we do have another bill that will address some of the gas tax that did survive. The same-sex marriage bill, companion in the House, again, that passed by indefinitely. So they didn't vote against it. They're just letting it sit there. And then House Bill 297, McNamara's Gas Tax, they also failed to take action on that one. Okay, next, please. Okay, here's some additional items that I just wanted to note. So first of all, the tax bills, I believe it was Mr. Moss, you asked last week about the standard deduction, which was on Governor Youngkin's proposals, an increase in the standard deduction. In the Senate, Senator Peterson had carried that bill and it was continued to 2023. Also, Suterline carried Senate Bill 11, that was also continued to 2023. So what they decided to do was to take any of those bills and had the Joint Tax Subcommittee study them. Any structural income tax bills were sent to study. The grocery tax bill, the survive, the surviving bill was Senate Bill 451, Senator Boyce Co.'s, and they rolled all of the other bills into that. Again, I mentioned the grocery tax has several components. The Senate version will keep the 1% option and codifies the school payment will be made for now from the general fund. The concern there is that right now, yes, we do have plenty of money in the general fund, but on, you know, years from now, it could even be after the biennium, will that money still be in the general fund for us to do that? There's no other revenue source that's been committed to. The House version, House Bill 90, has a funding formula for the school portion, but does not keep the 1% local option. So those, the grocery tax bills are going to definitely be, you know, go to to a, the committee that will figure out what they would like to do. If there is a specific ask of city council that you would like to see it go one way or the other, whether it's keep the 1% or not keep the 1%, or or come up with another funding source, please let me know and we can certainly voice our opinion on that one. And as far as the fuel tax, House Bill 1144, which was Weber's, was engrossed yesterday. It has not yet passed, but I'm expecting that may, that one may pass. And that one lowers the tax rate for, starting in July 1st, 2022. And let's see, then the other one, the Senate bill did not survive, the fuel tax. Collective bargaining, just wanted to mention, there were several bills about collective bargaining, some that would repeal several of the things last year. None of those went through. So there are no substantive changes on collective bargaining. The only small bills that went through were really cleanup items. One bill has to do with employees that do not want to be within a collective bargaining unit, don't, do not have to give permission for their paycheck to be taken, you know, to have that money taken out. So that one is is going through. But other than that, nothing substantial on collective bargaining. Last night, I got a little worried when I saw the, I know this was an issue last year for many of our employees, especially in Parks and Rec, where the comp time ability to give comp time was taken away. And it was put back in the special session budget, which was in August of 2021, which was just kind of a intermediate fix, because that dies when the budget changes. So there was no permanent replacement. House Bill 1173, which was Delegate Ware's, passed the House 59 to 40. And then Senate Bill 631 is awaiting the Senate vote today. It seemed like a no-brainer, but it had a lot of issues yesterday on the floor. And I am told that hopefully, they've worked it out and that it will be passed today. If it's not, we need to do, I would, I would suggest that we do something because I know, as I've already talked to Regina and and several others, and I know it was a real issue for Virginia Beach last year. So last slide. Okay. And I think with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
We'll have questions and then we'll ask for direction after. Any questions? Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Deborah. The STR bill where it says if you don't have rules in place, you can't put any moving forward, does that mean that you can, we that have rules, can we change the rules that we have? Could we add rules to it? Not that I'm looking to add any rules, I'm just curious. Closer to my mic.
It's better now.
Okay. So my question is on the bill where if you don't have an ordinance placed for rules on the STRs, you won't be able to in the future. What does that do to the ordinance that we have? I'm not looking to add rules, but what if we wanted, we found we needed to add something? Can we change what we have?
It's back there, I'm assuming.
I mean, I can't get any closer.
I think there's an issue with television, so IT's working on it. Okay, one more time.
Hopefully, the third time is the charm. Okay, here we go. The STR bill where you, if you don't have ordinances in place to regulate them, does that affect the one that we have where we could make changes to it if we needed to?
No. No, we're good with the one that we have because it's only, the way it's worded right now, it's only if you have no ordinance. And our ordinance also, I can, I can have Mark Stiles speak to this, he's read it, but I believe that we're fine the way we are.
So we could make changes to it in the future if we needed to?
I believe that's true. There doesn't say anything about making changes. It just says that you have one in place.
Anyone else for questions? Mr. Moss?
I wanted to ask some questions relative to, anyway, good afternoon, about what takes place after, between when the General Assembly adjourns and the governor does his markup. I'll use two examples. One, let's just take worst case. If the comp time thing didn't get addressed in the Senate, is that something that the government could, the governor could make an adjustment and feedback to the General Assembly to make an amendment?
He could. He could. It could also be handled in the budget, which, so we have a couple more bites at the apple in case we find out today that it doesn't go through the Senate. But I will know, I will know that by the end of today.
Which of the grocery options is the administration lobbying for in the General Assembly?
As of now, it looks like, hang on, I've got my note here. Not clear. It, it, it seemed to me that it was having the one, the, the one that was most favored was keeping the 1% local option and making sure that they backfill the schools. But like I said, there is such a difference of opinion on both sides and in both houses that I just do not know where it will end up. In some cases, they, of course, in the House, they are favoring what the governor has asked for, and in the Senate, not so much. I wish I had a better answer.
Lastly is, have the joint conferees on the budget been identified, other than the chairman's?
No. They have not yet been identified.
My fellow council members would like to know who they are so that we could individually engage as we may so choose to do so.
I'll give you that information.
Henley?
On the, the bill regarding trees, I know that there were about five bills that were introduced between Senate and House, and they were sort of combined. Do you have just sort of a thumbnail of of what is in the bill that's surviving?
It's mainly just giving the local, localities more authority to direct what a developer would need to do for new developments and how they would need to preserve trees. And if they couldn't preserve trees, what they would need to do to mitigate damages. And they just want to give the broadest authority to, or the bills want to give, the broadest authority to the localities to make that determination, because it's not, as they say, a one-size-fits-all. Several jurisdictions feel much differently and have much, many different issues that arise when they don't have trees than, say, we do, such as flooding and that. So it, I think they're good bills in that they would give us the most flexibility. But on the side of the commercial developers, they don't, of course, want us to make those restrictions. So that's another one we have no idea what will happen.
Okay. Is there any type of, of one of these items that you need direction on, or is it that died pretty well cast?
Well, I think that I, if we follow suit like we did last year, as far as the compensatory time, I, I think if you all are in agreement, which I think you probably would be, that if, if that seems to not be boding well, that that we can speak out. If you'd give me permission to be able to say, yes, we, we want to preserve the ability to give our employees comp time. I understand there would be a financial implication for our budget also if we did not, we're not able to do that, which has not been budgeted for. And other than that, I think we, there's, I've got all of your marching orders on all of the others. So if they seem not to be moving along or moving along in a way we don't want to, I think I have what I need there.
And just to let the council know, on Thursday, Vice Mayor Wilson and I will be making a field trip up to, you know, to Richmond. So certainly, if there's really an issue that you want us to talk to, any of the delegation around and emphasize, you know, please let us know. Mr. Dehaney?
Deborah, clarify again what you need from council and compensatory time, because I'm not sure that we got any clearance to advocate one way, shape or form.
So do I have permission to advocate to keep compensatory time for the local government employees?
Okay. Is anybody against, you know, that course of action? Hey, looks like a go.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Okay, at this point, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this time, Leticia Shelton, our finance director, has got a brief counsel on our interim financial update for the month of January.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Vice Mayor Wilson and council members. I have to point out, I'm sorry, that it says January 31st, 2021. It should actually say January 31st, 2022. So please excuse our error on that. General Fund revenues since January are $587 million and are 47.4% of the budget and exceeds the prior year by $43.3 million. General Fund expenditures are $789 million, or 58.4% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by $49.8 million. The chart on the screen reflects a two-year average for general fund revenues and expenses. As you can see, the actual revenues in blue are 45.6% through January and are tracking 1% higher than the two-year average of 44.6%. Actual, actual expenditures are 58.4%. The green line are tracking 6.2% below the two-year average, which is currently showing at 64.6%. Okay. Real estate taxes, real estate tax revenue is $306 million, which is 51.6% of the current year's budget. Personal property tax revenue is $24.5 million, which is 20.6% of the current year's budget. General sales tax revenues are $47 million, which is 64.5% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by $8 million. Restaurant, restaurant meal tax revenue is $33.2 million, which is 83% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by $11.2 million. Hotel room tax revenue is $7.5 million and exceeds the prior year by $2.4 million. This slide highlights personnel costs. Total personnel cost through January is $245 million, or 54% of the total budget, which is $8 million more than the previous year. The total cost of salaries through January represents 15 of the 26 pay periods. Public safety community, public safeties personnel cost through January is $101 million compared to last fiscal year of $94.3 million. And that concludes the finance update.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Yeah, Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm referring back not to the briefing, but to the letter, the memo. One of the things when I was looking at potentially trying to use real estate as a place to do tax expenditures, one of the things that was an impediment was the fact that many people, or I shouldn't say many, some people pay their whole property tax at the beginning of the year and don't make two payments. So I would like to know, not today, but later date is, of the 3.2 million that you mentioned here about more than the prior year, I'd just like to know how many people on 5 December, really, what's that dollar value in with people that paid more? And one of also the things that came up, and I'm sure many of you people got the same email I did, that if you're one day late on paying the property tax, you pay interest for every day in the month of December. Yes, that was really a surprise to me, that it's not prorated, the penalty, but the interest is charged for every day in the month, not for the month. That's something we might want to look at at budget time as a, as a change. But if you could confirm that, I think email I got from several people, I guess, who were, for whatever reason, paid one day short, ended up being, you know, pretty substantial bill. But I'd just like to know how many people paid, paid early. And, and I know one of the things on personnel costs, but where, how, if you could just show, how are we tracking on benefits? Because that's not based on, benefits not go against overtime and also gives you a better idea of where you are on vacancies, because that's a better, if you don't pay a benefit if there's a vacancy. And that gets back, Mr. City Manager, as to if we were fully, if we had our traditional onboard count, which wasn't 14% vacancies, but I think we're around the 5% range, what would our execution look like? Because that gives you an idea. Hopefully, one day we get back to normal and it would be nice to know what normal would have looked like had we been normal, because I think that will be insightful information for the upcoming budget, because I know we hope one day to be back to normal and have those positions filled. That'd be great. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, Ms. Wilson?
A few years ago, John Wheat's had a new thing where John Atkinson brought it forward. He called it the Oops Factor, of people for the very first time missed their deadline on their property tax, you know, if something, if they were out of town or something like that, to give them a one-time-only grace period. Is that still? Is, is that still?
I would have to check.
Because that's what we're.
Well, my only point is.
We passed that, because I know I, I carried it. It's been quite a few years ago, but can you look into that?
Yes.
Because we need to be allowing that to happen if somebody, you know, somebody could be in hospital, they were out of the country, or, you know, they normally pay on a regular basis, you know, but they just happen to mess up one time.
My only point was, if we're not incurring a cost, why are we charging a cost? Because the penalty's 10%, because you're late no matter what. I can understand that incentivizing people to pay on time. But to collect the money on a date and then get charged interest, even if it's your third time for 28 more days, when you haven't incurred an economic damage, it seems to me like it's, if that were a bank, I'd be changing banks. But I just want to look at it, I just think.
No, no, that's fine, but I didn't know if you, if you knew about.
Oh, I knew that, and I knew that the treasurer has the permission to, the ability to grant something that she thinks there's a reason on her own discretion.
Yes.
She has that authority, but I'm just, but we also have an ordinance, and I just want to look at that, and maybe that's just not the right ordinance.
Okay. I will look at that.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any council discussions, initiatives, or comments?
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with a heavy heart and sad news that announced the passing of Mr. Bruce Williams. He was the president of the Executive Board for Virginia African-American Cultural Center. He passed last week, saying condolences to his wife Helen and his entire family. And so I spoke to Amelia Ross Hammond, who worked very closely with Bruce. You know, they're very passionate about the Virginia African-American Cultural Center, and was asked to get a resolution together, signed by his body, so she can read it at his funeral this Friday. And so.
We'll make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Rouse, any idea of the arrangements for Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Here on the site, they have a public viewing will be held Thursday, February 17th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Graves Funeral Home, 1631 Church Street, Norfolk, Virginia. And a wake will also be held the same day from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Graves Funeral Home. The funeral is actually Friday, the 18th, at 1:00 p.m. at the historic First Baptist Church of Norfolk, and that's 418 East Butte Street, Norfolk, Virginia.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and we'll get that proper.
Thank you, sir.
I'll get it finished.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Henley.
On the issue of trees, I'm not so sure that we are, I mean, we're advocating that in development, that we get some better opportunity for development to consider the value of keeping trees instead of clear cutting a lot and so forth. But I'm not so sure that we are carrying it out in our own projects. I understand there's a project going on, that's a utility project now, that we're doing some great damage to some live oak trees. I know, right after the pandemic started, because we were supposed to have, have adopted it, but the pandemic hit, so we waited a couple of months. But we did pass an ordinance that if we take down any trees in any of our projects, that we replace that number of trees elsewhere. And, and I think I asked once before how we're tracking that, and if we're in fact doing that, and if in our projects, we are making every effort to, to maintain as many trees as we can. I know that it's an issue that, you know, the public feels strongly about in, in protecting trees where we can. And I think if we're going to try to get the authority to, to utilize this as a, in, in development, that we ought to be doing it ourselves in our own projects. So if we could, could look into that. And I know that there's a, we had several years ago, I think, did we adopt the live oak as being our city tree? I know that there was a movement, and I think there's a, a great concern about the live oaks in, in the city. And we do have a grove of them in the Princess Anne Commons area. And the group that's the Friends of the Live Oaks has been asking that we take some action to make sure that that grove is, is protected. And so I would like for us to, you know, identify it and see if we can move in that direction. I think if we're going to preach something, we have to practice it ourselves. And, and I hope we can, can be a little bit more conscious of what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to respond to Ms. Henley's question. Ms. Henley, I got your email, and I sent you a quick response, but it was right before you came to council. We don't think that was our project, so we are looking to get a sense of who actually is doing that work right there so we can get you a better sense of it. I did ask the question of staff to look into what we're actually doing, exactly as you said it, for tracking and what our time is, right, it is for that ordinance that we passed. Let me, once I get that report, I'll definitely share it with you and the members of council, just so you can get a better sense of what actually is going on. If something isn't going on, because I'm not sure what actually was passed or what was enacted, we'll make sure we rectify it, you know, but I'll definitely get you the information that you asked for, council member.
Thank you. Yep, Mr. Branch.
Just on, on that topic, so when we reconstitute the Open Space Committee, maybe that's something we can bring under its auspice. Also, I've gotten some calls about some ideas about how to preserve trees and create easements and all that. I know there's some concerns from the city, but I think that would be a good place to vet this sort of thing, because it does have the public's attention.
And there's another topic that I think I've had brought up once before on, on another topic completely, and that is the workforce issues that we have. And, and I know that we're seeing, I guess, a news release went out about the workforce project that we approved, or the funding that we approved to try to attract people into the mental health field. I think there's got to be a lot more done than just signing bonuses, and that's what I expressed before. But I think this workforce report that was supposed to have been available to us in mid-December supposedly has a whole group of things that are issues, and I would really like to see that full report. I know we got a really brief summary, but it didn't tell me anything. But if they have spent this time and effort and money identifying various things that we can do to bring people back into the workforce, I, I think we really need to, to know what those opportunities are, because clearly, it's not just a matter of, of a bonus here or there. I think there's more to it, and we need to know what it is.
Yeah, Mr. Dehaney, with that being said, you know, forgive me, but what's the status of the survey that we're doing for everybody?
Market salary survey?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to brief council on that during the retreat.
Okay, great. You know, you know, I think that'll, Ms. Henley, that'll certainly be helpful and give us the opportunity to also integrate with that, the retention and recruitment strategies. And by then, we'll know what departments are, you know, logistically challenged by personnel.
Well, I know in these two grants that we gave, one was for tourism, and one was for mental health. So they weren't just for, you know, city positions. And if, you know, if there are things, I really think it's going to come down to workforce training with our people who are maybe changing jobs, or coming out of the military, or coming out of school and so forth, that we're really going to need to, to do some conscious identifying of the kinds of jobs that we have available in the city, not just city jobs, and, and try to encourage, in whatever ways they've identified, we need to encourage people to, to do these things. Apparently, maybe there were some perceptions about tourism jobs, just watching one of the ads, that maybe was causing people to want to do that. I don't know, but that's what I think is supposed to be in this report. And if there are things that we, we can and could be doing, it's not just a matter, like I say, of throwing money at it. I think it's a matter of, of actively trying to direct the, the whole issue in some direction. And I think cooperating with our higher education and our educational facilities of all, all types around the city might be a place to start. But I, I think if we have this, this intent to do something about it, I think we, you know, if we paid for this study, I think we need to get it, and more than just a couple of page summary. Thank you.
Thank you, but Ms. Henley, if I could just, you know, just mention a few things. Manager and I are going to be having a quarterly meeting at Oceania tomorrow. And we in Little Creek are actively engaged in the Skill Bridge program, which would allow people about to leave active duty or retire to actually, you know, start refocusing their skills or, you know, working, you know, within an organization. You know, I, I really think we have a vested interest in Virginia Beach to try to keep as many of our veterans here as we possibly can. And as technologies emerge, you know, for instance, the offshore wind, I think we have a program going on now with TCC for workforce training and development. And I can tell you, I'm on the advisory committee for the Workforce Development Council. You know, we realize the magnitude of the importance that if we're going to be bringing the businesses in, you know, with offshore wind, with the cables and everything, that we're going to have to do that. But I think we're also engaging with the universities. You know, ODU just got certified as the Carnegie One Research. We're also looking to expand in the areas of cybersecurity, which may bring some, you know, very, very well-paid jobs. GTS, the old golf course on Bird Neck, you know, they have recruiting strategies where they're trying to get a lot of people from the neighborhood in. But once again, they're, they're going to be building. So, but once again, you know, we have, I concur with you 100%. We're going to have to keep our workforce demands up, you know, as, you know, technology grows.
They shouldn't be the best-kept secrets. We've got to get the word out.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Moss.
Couple things. One, I don't know how many of you had the opportunity yet to read, to read the State of the Region report. But one of the things it mentions towards there that's holding this, we do not have, and has not yet evolved to be recognized, to have a first-rate research institution of higher learning. They talk about number of patents that ODU issues. They talk about the only year where it's nationally recognized is in physics. And, you know, I have mentioned several times, and I will mention it again, that most of the places that have achieved that status, which is why Boston is like the number-two city in the country to invest in, despite its high cost, it's because it's high concentration of high academic STEM PhDs, and the tremendous incubators of products that produce and come out of those areas. So I think that this is the case, Mr. Mayor, with the region. No one city can afford an academic chair in terms of the labs and stuff that goes with it. It's about $20 to $25 million investment to make that happen. But if we really are going to try to grow, then we've got to be having and figure out if that's, matter of fact, one of the areas they mentioned in the report was its coastal land management, or understanding the oceans, and a couple of areas where they mentioned that ODU was primed to go in there. But that's going to take capital investment, because you have to have academic chairs to attract the national talent, international talent, to make that work. So I would continue to suggest that that is an area where all the localities could chip in and probably do more than Hampton Roads Alliance. In terms of generating real secondary jobs, is because what comes out of those people that do research? And if you look at the job growth that takes place in Blacksburg, which is not the center of the known universe, relative to other areas, I think it's directly tied to the amount of academic chairs they have and the type of research that they do. And we need to elevate, and that's in the report clearly, the relative standing, and that's going to come from research at that institution. So I would applaud you and your efforts with the other mayors, and this council's a body to figure out how to weigh to make some movement on that. Also, I'd like to hear from our lobbyists in Washington. I know there's a movement now for a national moratorium on the federal gas tax. That's now under consideration by the administration. While it sounds nice, I don't think that's probably really the right answer for relief, but nonetheless, that's up there, and we got to figure out what is that? And do we want to have a position to communicate? I think that would be helpful. I couldn't agree more with Ms. Henley about workforce. If you don't really understand the issue from the view of the workers, not from the view of the employers, you're, you're not going to close that gap. And I do think that you only have to watch some of the ads being done by businesses today, trying to attract workers, whether Amazon or you name it, you know, time flexibility. And I'm certain, if Mr. Dehaney's experience is the same as mine, very few young people today in competitive fields want to come to work every day of the week. And they'll find some place where they don't have to. So if you can't figure out how to adapt your organization to the demands of that skilled talent, you're going to have employment gaps, no matter what you're paying, because they want to have more time flexibility. So I, I think we'll probably hear that. That's just an observation, if you would. And I know Mr. Branch and myself both attended the, I'll call it the listening tour, at the, at the convention center the other evening. I thought it was well-conducted. I thought the people gave very thoughtful ideas. I look forward to seeing the unabridged, as well as the abridged feedback from the groups. But it was a, a very good engagement, and people really have good thoughts about, about both the opportunities and the challenges that we face. So that was well done, Mr. Mayor. I was really, I was very pleased with that. And I, I think maybe someone else had planned on attending, and I'm sorry if I've, by showing up. But we might want to advertise those such that three or more council members can be there and meet all the requirements, because I think I heard they're calling someone saying, well, Mr. Moss is here. And I think, oh, and I felt bad about that, but I didn't leave.
No, 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 I was glad that you were there.
But, but anyway, but we might want to just advertise those such that if more show up, that I think that just passively listening and watching that whole process gives you a great contextual understanding of what's, what's going on in the community. And those were, oh, and one last comment. Two things came out today, you know, was the producer price index was today 9.7% year over year. That's not a good sign for a long-term look. And a less reported was the commodity index of all commodities, up 11.1%. Obviously, steel and cement more. So these are all things. And the reason why I mention this, because I maybe think it may be to our benefit, maybe not. Under, you know, under arbitrage, you've got to put money back. If you earn more than the treasury note, you've got to give the interest back. But it may well be that we may want to reconsider how we borrow money. And maybe giving the interest back might be a hedge against the rising interest rates in the future. But we got to look at that scenario to see if arbitrage is, because you don't lose money, you've just got to give the profit away, that maybe it might, the case might be in rising interest rate environment to, to borrow ahead and pay the arbitrage, pay the arbitrage money back and save money on the lower interest rate. It's a technical issue, but I know the staff and our bond people can look at that, but it's, it's worth looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Ms. Henley, just if I can respond to one of Mr. Moss's concerns. A couple of years ago, I went to Raleigh-Dwong to take a look at their research triangle. And it was amazing to see the development, the cooperation. We were hopefully going to kind of pursue something along that line, but this COVID came along, and there's been some changes in leadership at TCC, at ODU, and now at Christopher Newport. But I think one of the things that would be really advantageous for us to do is to get a simpler consortium of universities together, because companies are attracted to people that could actually do research for them, and it really gives students a far more practical application, and even with internships. You know, ultimately, I think the goal of everyone out this size is that when children graduate from high school or college, they find a job. Ms. Henley.
Just to comment on a couple of things from Mr. Moss. The next community conversation is this Thursday, the 17th, at Bayside Library, Bayside High School Library, I think. And, but to keep the, the group at the right size because of the COVID concerns, you know, we have been inviting people, and rather than just putting out the blanket announcement, I certainly hope the COVID situation is going to allow us to do it in a much broader fashion soon. But any council members who, who can, it's, I think it's worthwhile. It's so good to hear the, the public's feedback, and they, they're handling it very, very well. And I'll be looking forward to seeing that compilation, which I'm sure we all will. And the other thing, we have this resolution, I think John Moss and I both must have mentioned it. I think John Moss and I both must have mentioned it. When we adopted the resolution about the referendum, we established that there would be a citizen oversight board. But we suggested, I think, that it be named something besides the Citizen Oversight Board because that doesn't say too much about what the citizens are going to oversee. And so this resolution that we'll just pass out and then we can have at our next voting session would rename it to the Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board to make it clear what the intent is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Vice Mayor, I think we're ready for consent.
Okay, under Ordinance Resolutions K, the Resolution to Add a Legislative Request to the 2022 Legislative Agenda Regarding the Amendment of the Marriage Provision of the Constitution of Virginia.
I can't hear you, Madam Vice Chair.
I don't know what's wrong.
I can rip it out and hand it to her.
K1 is the Resolution to Add a Legislative Request to the 2022 Legislative Agenda Regarding the Amendment of the Marriage Provision to the Constitution of Virginia.
I would like to hear that, Madam Vice Mayor.
So are you pulling it?
Yes. Number two, the Ordinance to Amend the Scope of CIP Project Number 10334, Replacement of Arudy Inlet Dredge.
I just have a comment.
Mr. Moss.
I had a number of questions on this, which made me think at first, you know, I would want more discovery. But the answers from the staff, which I greatly appreciated as to how we got to this point, wasn't at the staff volunteering. It was past administration direction. So I was very happy with the response that I got and the candidness from the staff as well. I just wanted to mention that.
Everybody else okay? Number three, the Ordinance to Appropriate $379,000 in Fund Balance from the Police Federal and State Seize Access Special Revenue Fund to the FY 2021-22 Police Department Operating Budget Regarding Purchase Feals, Equipment, and Training. Everybody okay? Number four, the Resolution to Establish Midwest Medical Transport Company, LLC, and Authorize Annual EMS Permit Regarding Private Ambulance Services. Number five, Ordinance to Accept and Appropriate Funding from the Virginia Resources Authority, Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund. A is $3 million to Capital Project 10551, Stormwater Green Infrastructure Regarding Design and Construction of Nature-Based Drainage Improvements in Two Locations Near the Eastern Branch of the Elizabeth River. Everybody okay?
Could I just make one comment?
Yes.
It really would be nice because this is really great news that if a letter went out, I don't know who it's from, both to the civic leagues and Sea-Tac and also this over there letting them know that this project, I think that would be good communication for those active civic leagues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moss.
And also good to put signs to let anybody that drives by to say this.
We cannot over-communicate our good work.
You know, I mean, I've been asking for signs in front of projects for years.
And these funds came from the Regi Program, which we hope we can keep.
Right.
Number B is $1,925,000 to Capital Projects 10600 Sea-Tac Neighborhood Improvements to Complete Design and Construction of Drainage Improvements in the Sea-Tac Neighborhood Along South Burnec Road. Everybody okay? Okay, number six is the Ordinance to Accept and Appropriate in the FY 2021-22 Police Department Operating Budget. Number A is $25,000 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services via the Southern Virginia Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Task Force and the Bedford County Sheriff's Office Regarding Overtime Purchase of Equipment, Travel, and Training to Enhance Efforts to Address Internet Crimes Against Children. Can't imagine anybody against that. Number B, $374,850 from the Department of Emergency Management via the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency Regarding Purchase Equipment to Prevent and Respond to Potential Acts of Terrorism.
Okay, open that public hearing on planning.
Number one. Azmini Kumar Padan and Fusalata Padan, probably really.
You got that right.
Did I get it okay? Figure I really. For a modification of proffers to a conditional change of zoning Regarding Change Sideyard Setback at 1521 Taylor Farm Road and 2617 Horse Pasture Road, District 5, formerly District 3, Rose Hall. Michael, are we okay with that?
I've heard no objections, and so I'm comfortable placing that on consent.
Number two, Dragus Associates, Inc., Hawkins Mills, L.C., Hawkins Mill and Haygood Condominium Associates, Inc. For a Conditional Change of Zoning From R10 Residential District to Conditional A24 Apartment Districts. A modification of proffers Regarding the Increase in Number of Multi-Family Dwellings By 16 at 5,05024 Haygood Road, District 4 and District 4. Number three, Envision Studio, Inc., Woodway Knob Hill, LLC, For a Conditional Use Permit Regarding a Tattoo Parlor at 6361 Indian River Road, Suite 107, District 1, Formerly District 1 Centerville. I guess that's Ms. Wooton and Mr. Holcomb.
I've heard nothing about it.
Is that okay?
I haven't heard any opposition to it.
Okay, number four, Watson Real Estate, too, LLC, for Additional Use Permit Regarding Animal Hospital and Commercial Kennel at 2497 North Lanning Road, District 2, formerly District 7, Princess Anne. Ms. Henley.
Well, they have nods from the Historical Review Board, the Transition Area Committee, and the Planning Commission. So they've worked pretty hard on this, and I have had no complaints. So I think they can get a go.
That's good because we need more animal hospitals. There's a real shortage of vets in hospital facilities.
Well, especially with COVID, more and more people have pets. So, number five, MiRong Newland-Lanstown Commons Owner, LLC, For a Conditional Use Permit Regarding a Tattoo Parlor at 3312 Princess Anne Road, District 2, formerly District 7, Princess Anne. Ms. Henley.
I can consent.
We got a number of speakers on that.
We know that's not on consent. Number six, winners. Number seven? No, no, that's going to be pulled. Mitchby Tattoos, LLC, DBA Gray Scale Tattoo Gallery, Mitchell Anthony Bear, Southern Star Commons, LLC,